I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Okay, we're gonna have a moment of silence, please. Roll call coming?
Counsel Heising.
Here.
Counsel Simon.
Here.
Counsel Schneider.
Here.
Counsel President Stickley.
Here.
We have four members present. We need a forum.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see. Counsel has had time to review the prior meeting minutes. Can I get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, Mayor.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counsel President Stickley and seconded by Counsel Simon. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Um, let's see. Do you want to wait until new business for that, or what do you want to do?
Well, that would be too far down the line.
Okay, well, why don't we go ahead before we go into committee reports?
Okay. I'll make a motion to excuse Shane Chamberlain from the meeting tonight. His daughter has a softball game. I assume that's the reason he's not here, but he asked me to make that motion.
Have a second, Pat.
Motion to excuse Counsel Chamberlain moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel Heising. Any discussion?
I do. So, I handed out papers a few months ago out of our ordinance, and nowhere on there, it was fairly clear, I thought, that they're supposed to contact the person in charge of the meeting, which tonight is the mayor, by text or by phone. Or if I get the privilege of conducting the meeting, then they call me. Nowhere on that paper said to text a fellow council member to be excused. The thing, other thing that bothers me is I was Thursday, I asked clearly and explained that we have business to consider tonight on emergency, and Brandon already was excused. We need five council members to vote on emergency. I asked, is anybody else have a problem of not being here? Mr. Chamberlain never stated that he may have a ballgame to go to to watch his daughter either play ball or to, what did he tell me today when I talked to him on the subject? Announce it. And I said, well, why can't you come to the meeting because you never said nothing? The agenda is set for the meeting tonight. It has to be an agreement of 24 hours prior to even change the agenda. We have city business to conduct. Please come to the meeting. We'll change your agenda, and you can be out of here in five minutes, and we'll move it to front. And he said, no. And I said, well, thanks a lot for not taking your duties as a council member seriously for the city of Washington and the residents and the people that voted you in, especially since I asked on Thursday the 11th to do that. So, that's my put on this.
I want to just add, I agree with Harold on everything that he's saying. I don't know because I'm not at your committee of the whole meetings when it's discussed who's going to be there or not, but I know this, this has been very unclear to me because I've been on council for 22 years and mayor, and I actually have, as mayor, have had to excuse Counsel Chamberlain when he has asked counsel during a meeting. The only way about calling, and Steve, you did nothing wrong, but it's not, how do you, how do you even have that on the minutes that he's asking you guys to be excused? Because I read it that it should be done as a majority, to ask the majority. And on there, it also states in 121 that if you want to be excused, you need to either ask the mayor prior to the meeting or get the majority vote. And the practice has always been the majority vote before that meeting, because underneath it says that, you know, during a meeting, that you can only be excused by the chair or the mayor. So, I mean, it contradicts what's happening here. I guess in order for us to do business with the city, it is only, you know, to me, we need to be reliable to be able to run the business. And if we can't, I have at times changed to an emergen, if it's an emergency that needs to be set, and I know there's not going to be enough people here, I will ask for an emergency meeting so that we can get it passed and then go right into our council meeting. But if I don't have 24-hour notice, which would have been Friday because we can't include the weekend, then I would have known. I'm not against him going and seeing his daughter. I'm not against anybody going to the games, but sooner or later, you're going to miss him. I missed him. I know, Sarah, you said you're missing a lacrosse game of your daughter's. That's the whole purpose of calling in and saying it. All of you have been very good about that. It's just for accountability. That's the word I was wanting to get. It's accountability to be able to run the meeting. And according to this, and I don't know, Stephen, I read it and have always practiced, well, first of all, we've never had council approval. It's always just, Mayor, I'm not going to be there, and that's what I did. That's what everyone else has done. This is just a situation where he wants council's approval instead of the mayor's. I'm fine with that. It's written in there. You can do that. But my gosh, do it before the meeting, because now the activate is what bothers me the most, that we can't pass it on emergency, because that would have been a fact for the employees. So, I'm, I don't care if, if he asked or not. All I'm saying is, when you have committee of the whole meetings and you run that straw poll of everyone going to be here if there's emergency, I'm not aware of that. I was not aware, and until Harold and I really talked, I didn't know that was even discussed at committee of the whole. So, I was under the impression, because Brandon asked me last week, and I was under the impression we had five council members. I didn't know till today. It's too late. It's too late today. So, I think it's up to council to decide more or less how we're going to do this. You know, unexcused absence, you don't have to be here. If you choose to come and say, hey, we got emergency and I can't make it, then you're just unexcused. You can't make it. It makes sense to me. That, you know, we got six unexcused absences for a year. If it's an emergency, you can't be there, or I forgot, I just totally forgot, that happens. We've all done it. But when you're asked and you don't even let your council know, then that's an issue because now we're here. And this has happened twice now with, not, you weren't here, but Scott was in Canada, and we had one not show, and we couldn't pass emergency on that one. So, that's all I'm going to say.
Well, I, I understand where you're coming from. I was just asked to do it.
Yes.
And because I knew there was emergency on tonight, I texted Corinne about we're going to have to probably reschedule another meeting. I suggested Wednesday evening because no athletic games around here go on Wednesday night because of turn tonight. It wouldn't have to be very long. We could give 24 hours notice, zip in, zip out.
Well, I know Brandon has gone Monday and Tuesday this week, so I don't know if he's available Wednesday or not.
We discussed, we are both available like 5:30 to 6:30 in that meeting.
Is Shane available?
I assume because no athletic contests go on Wednesday nights.
Okay. How about, since I chair, I'll, I'll try to get everybody meeting for that meeting. I'll try to see if we get enough, and I'll come back with that time, 5 to 6. And if it doesn't work, then I'll let Corinne let you know.
I can get back to town by 5:30.
Okay.
5:30 would be good. So, 5:30.
All right. And we'll see, we'll see if we can make that work and stuff, but I guess, again, I really, do we want to change this to a state, you know, ahead of the meeting?
I have read this multiple times, and I feel like it's very confusing language in general. I feel like I could probably kind of see it from various viewpoints.
If you're searching.
Well, yes. I just don't think it's really clear language that I was trying to say.
I think it conflicts.
What's the past practice, Pat?
The past practice since 1986 has been to ask. The problem is, we've never had to, because we've always just called the mayor.
Right.
This is a new format that, that Shane has created because it's available. But I also know that I have excused Counsel Chamberlain for once for vacation, and he asked, he asked council at a meeting, he asked for their approval. And it was like the week or two before, he said he was going on vacation, and it was during budget. So, he did ask. He did it like it's written. I just, we can't run business if we don't know, and if I don't know as the chair, who's going to be here or not, to how we're going to do the agenda.
I, I feel like, I mean, if, if this has changed at some point, I, I have never had an issue, I, you have been, you know, if I've had an issue being at a meeting, you know, I don't, I don't have any, so this is, this has nothing to do with you, but if a different mayor was in place and if there was conflict, I, I think there should be another way other than just that one method.
Well, that's what I was saying. You get six unexcused.
But as long as there are, there's more than one method, then I'd be comfortable with that, just for the future.
There is two. There's two.
Well, you can either get a little of the mayor or, I mean, it's not like, it's not like the schedule's a surprise.
No, it wasn't. And, and again, it's his choice to ask council. That is the second choice. But according to this, I read it as, okay, you gotta let the mayor know ahead of time. Why wouldn't you let council know ahead of time as well, instead of, you know?
So, I asked Tom, and we're going to review this further.
Let him, let him say something.
I mean, as it's worded right this moment, only notice to the mayor is prior to, but it can be a majority of the members present at the meeting. What's not clear in this is what triggers that. You know, is it, is it automatic that that vote is then taken when someone is unexcused? Or is it a situation where somebody has to move and there has to be a second? To me, that's the part that could use some clarity, is basically revive the process.
But what about like point number four at the bottom?
So, that, that covers during the meeting itself, and I'm looking back at the actual code that I think you.
It's 121.
Right. So, so four is during the meeting, so that's for like bathroom breaks or the stuff.
Oh, okay.
That's not.
That makes more sense.
Well, and also. I thought it meant, okay, we're excusing him during the meeting, you know what I'm saying?
Give him to.
But that's, that's not a year.
Yeah, he's made more sense to me, but I didn't get that from this language.
And I think the idea there is that the, the council can really only conduct business if there's enough people in the room, and so somebody could try to basically stifle the process by just leaving during the vote. They don't want to happen.
Another thing is if somebody has something at 5:30 and they come in and say, hey, I gotta leave early, then we have the privilege of being able to move the agenda forward so that we can do the business and then go back to report. We've done that numerous times with department heads and stuff.
Tom said, we could do that. We could come in tonight.
Yeah.
And, and change the agenda by vote, to change the agenda. And that would allow Shane to leave early. I left in '22, I, I asked council to, I would be gone these days, and I wouldn't be attending not only council meeting, but council at the whole meetings. And I was excused by council, but that was prior to me leaving. And if you knew that you wouldn't be here on 15th and asked council my thoughts, and Tom's going to have to clarify this, or Stephen Kim, then I thought what we should have done was talk about not being here on the first when council was in session to excuse someone by majority vote on the first, that I'm not going to be here on the 15th, and I would like to be excused. Not in the morning on the 15th to call or text Steve and say, make a majority vote to excuse me. You know, I even asked on the 11th, because knowing Brandon, if you guys recall, Brandon's going to be gone, I asked everyone, we got emergency legislation Monday night, is the five council members going to be here due to the fact that it takes five of us to make the emergency? So, basically tonight, city business will not be able to be conducted properly because there's only four of us here.
No, and I, I completely see that, you know, viewpoint, I also, I, I know it's really difficult to be a parent and have this position, because like I said, I'm missing my daughter's first lacrosse match right now, and that was a choice that I made, but I did not speak to him, and I do not know the circumstances, and I, I don't like to make assumptions when I didn't have the communication, so.
Well, Sarah, I've asked you.
I feel for both situations.
A schedule? Give me the schedule. I would have approved his softball schedule, basketball schedule, and in that way, I would have known if there was conflict, and that wasn't brought forward either. And that was a while back. Probably last year, I said, you know, just give me the schedule and ask for those days off if they conflict with council meetings, and you're excused. But I have an idea then, as, as the person who has to make sure this goes through, you guys gotta let me know. I mean, you can't just talk amongst yourself and expect it to happen, because I had no clue. I knew Brandon wasn't going to be here. I didn't know that he wasn't, but regardless, all of us have issues where we gotta, we gotta take off, whether it's emergency, whether it's for family, whether it's whatever. But we were also voted to be here to do business, and I guess my question to council is, do we change that to make it to where if you can't be here and you know you're not going to be here, or you know there's conflict, you, you allow the chair or whoever, council, to know the meeting ahead? It's so simple, because that's how it's always been. This is, to me, is, you know, these guys, you know, they come to your committee of the whole, they tell you what's going to be on the agenda, they tell you this is going to have to be in an emergency, everything else, and then here we are. So, it's just accountability. That's it. No one's saying you can't be there. And then again, if there's two gone and there's emergency and neither one of them can make it, that's up, you know, to either me to say that it's unexcused or for council, so.
Well, to solve the immediate problem, I am willing to come in a further session to, you know, do the business of the city, so I, you know, that, I don't know how else to solve the immediate problem.
I'd like council to put that up for an agenda, and just so that he can ask you or you guys can ask me, but let's get some timeframe between it if you know you're not going to be here. Everybody else has been great, and if it's going to be a problem, and I know two weeks ahead of time, I can schedule a meeting that's going to work for everybody. I'm not going to tell you no, but I, it's just the fact that if I don't know, it's unexcused.
There is emergencies, and my thoughts, and everybody's got them, that we can't be here. I mean, if Steve has a heart attack at 3 o'clock, or his wife gets hurt, or there's an accident or other major catastrophes, Harold could die at 3 o'clock. I'm not coming.
Well, you'd be excused.
Somebody, excused or not, I'm probably not going to show.
Phil will tell us.
But, well, you know, I think, I think, I believe that we as council should talk with Tom and get some clarification on this ordinance to make it better and more clear.
Yeah.
And we can do that in the future. But I agree with you, Sarah. We can come back and make a special meeting at a certain time, and if it's Wednesday, the 18th, at 5:30, I'm good for that.
I'll make sure everybody, I will make sure it's all out so that I can get over town as well.
Not everybody can be here. We need at least five.
How, we need five, even if it's not?
For the emergency, yes.
And again, I've been mayor for 10 years. I've never said no. I will work it out so that you guys can get to where you gotta be. But let's move on.
Yep.
There's a motion on the floor by Steve.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
No.
Three a's, one nay. Motion does not?
It passed.
He gets, he's excused.
Okay.
Because we have four people, that's a problem.
It's majority.
Majority rules.
All right, moving on. Committee reports. We had a finance committee meeting.
Yes, at the finance committee meeting, it was discussed that the Rotary Club is going to pay for equipment at Homecoming Park. The cost of the equipment comes to over $200,000. They asked the city if we would be willing to pay $50,000 for the installation, because if the city employees install it, then the liability on the equipment goes way down. There's not much insurance on it, so you have to have a professional install it. They would like to be able to buy the equipment, but they didn't want to have to pay the installation fee, the way I understood it. So, we agreed at the council, or at the finance committee meeting, to go ahead and okay this because we thought it was worth the $50,000 to get $200,000 donated in playground equipment. And there's still money available in the Parks and Rec Fund, and so it would be covered by that levy. And that was the first item. Second one was Jamie asked for council to okay entering into an agreement with the Everside Clinic to let people go there instead of having to go to their own personal physician. That would cost originally $10, and if, if they use it a lot, could go up to 65. And we agreed to do it, but not for the family members, I believe. And if it works out, if enough people use this, Jamie said there could be a savings to the city of approximately $150,000 because we wouldn't have to be paying out to people because the money would be going to Everside Clinic, and that's covered. That's just a very brief summary. So, we okayed that 2 to 0 as well. We thought that was a, a good deal. Potentially, we could save.
And I thought you guys said that you wanted to kind of see how it goes with the employees and then possibly give it back to the families, or offer it to the family.
Yeah, after, after we see how it goes, you know? If it, if it turns out we're paying the money and we're not saving anything, then why spend more? So, that was pretty much it.
It's definitely convenient for employees to be able to have their needs met, you know, in a quicker way.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have two pieces of agenda to vote on here from the finance committee. So, the first one is a recommendation that $50,000 be reallocated in the Parks and Recreation Special Fund for payments towards the new playground equipment.
I'll second. I think that's a great deal for the city.
Yes, it is. The Rotary has been so amazing towards the city.
For sure.
Recommendation that $50,000 be relocated in the Parks and Rec Special Fund for payment towards the new playground equipment moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel Heising. Any discussion? Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Four a's, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay. Then the second recommendation from finance is to underwrite a portion of cost for provide, or provide full-time and part-time employees to access Everside Clinic.
I will move on that.
I'll second.
Recommendation to underwrite a portion of cost to provide full-time and part-time employees access to Everside Clinic moved by Counsel Heising and seconded by Counsel Simon. Any discussion? Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Simon?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Four a's, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Department head reports. Phil?
Yep, we met last Friday morning with civil service. We're going to open up the promotional process so that we can replace some of the individuals that we lost down the line. That would allow us to move up paramedic to captain and a, a line paramedic up to lieutenant. So, we're going to start that process. Other than that, we've got lots of truck maintenance going on downstairs, lots of building maintenance, as you can see. We did hear from Crate and Electric, they're going to be hopefully starting work the first week of June to install the generator for the building, and that's about it.
Questions? What are the, I can't remember the term for the power thing, the project, what do they call?
The cord reels?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that going?
Yeah, the steel, the steel's here. It's cut. That last rainy day when we had the monsoon, Public Works cut the steel to length. The hardware's all put together. We are waiting on Fastenal to ship, which they should have shipped last Friday, and as soon as they get to the Archibald store, they will bring it over hopefully sometime this week. And we're set up with Frank Kaufman to bring his man leftover to start in stone right away.
Sounds good.
Anything from Chief Kessler Jr.?
Did he say?
He's the quiet one.
Yes. Okay. Keith?
It's kind of hard to.
I know.
Overshadow that. One thing, I do need a personnel committee meeting for the groundskeeper position. Tom has reviewed all the job descriptions that came from Clemmons and Nelson. Everything is good to go. Friday, we met with civil service to get the, that entry level test set for the groundskeeper as well as change over the testing for the construction maintenance worker to get a more, better test, I should say. Same, same type of test, just we tweaked the questions a little bit to make it more encompassing of the job itself. Homecoming Park, if you've driven by it, we've got that dug out. They found that it had been tiled back when it was first put in, but it appears that when they put the second set of playground equipment in, that they put the post right through the tile, so it wasn't draining. It was just sitting there as a big pond. We are extending that tile up to the swing set and hooking a secondary drain off of it to another tile on the south side of the park. That way, if for some reason one end gets plugged up, we still have secondary drain. We'll fill it up with stone, put it level with the gazebo. We didn't have to rip out the wall. We didn't have to move the gazebo.
Still have the wind block there.
Everything will, will still be there and should be accessible to everyone. Hopefully, we'll be installed by May.
And we'll avoid the same tile issue with this installation?
Yes. Yes, we've asked for a blueprint ahead of time so that we can put the post in, or at least the foundation block, so that we don't have that problem. Make sure we're not putting the tile right where they're going to put it.
When was that put in? My goodness, that's been a while back.
I've been here since '84, and it was before that.
I broke my leg when they put it in. I'm on the top.
Really? Oh, my goodness.
How old were you? I was 83.
Oh, my goodness.
How long ago was that?
35 years ago.
Yeah. I stopped it, yeah.
Something like that.
So, how far are they raising what the existing is?
If you go out there and, I really think you should go out and take a look at it.
I went and looked at it over the weekend.
Where the gazebo is, one right there by the entrance to the playground.
Okay.
It will be at that level and maybe just a little bit higher sloping up to the playground equipment. But the gravel or stone will be just below that, and then there'll be three to four inches of mortar on top of it.
So, in layman's terms, from the entrance, what is that? How much are we going to put in?
About a foot of stone.
Because they would be bringing it up.
Yeah.
Be about 82, 83 that tile was put in.
Wow, yeah, that is a lot.
And that was done before the rest of the park. I do remember that.
No kidding?
Yes, yeah.
So, it's been bad. It's been a swimming pool more than.
Well, the new section was put in, the, the actual first section of playground was put in, then was tiled and then put in. Then they put the wall up and did other, because it was a wood wall.
It was a wood wall.
Wood wall. When it first started.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and even.
Like wooden sort of thing that you walked across.
They were post put together, yeah. But then they, then they redid the concrete.
Rarol tile, was it?
Yeah.
So the crease soed ruined.
Appropriate company from the slide over to the.
On the right pierce and all of there.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Unsupervised.
All right. Any other questions, Keith? Okay, Stephen, what do you have?
I don't believe I have anything.
Nothing? Nothing? Okay. I think that's about it then. All right, let's move on to legislation. All right, we are gonna start with the first reading of legislation, Ordinance 2024-1, which is an ordinance amended section 933.07(c)(1) of the codified ordinances of the City of Wausau. Yeah. You get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion to place resolution 2024- Ordinance 2024-1 on first reading, moved by Council President Stickley and seconded by Councilor Schneider. Any discussion?
It says ordinance up above, but most of them is 2024-16.
That was a, that was a copy and paste typo.
Okay, so it is 2024-16, correct?
No, it is ordinance one.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Oh, that's from meeting. Okay. So that, we need to amend that motion before we're ready. Okay.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Councilor Simon?
Yes.
Councilor Heising?
Yes.
Four A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Okay, then we have resolution 2024-16, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended agreement for health insurance coverage with Pareto Captain Services. And it states to declare an emergency, we'll have to put it on first reading.
So I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion to place resolution 2024-16 on first reading, moved by Council President Stickley and seconded by Councilor Simon. Any discussion?
So this is the thing that we can vote on Wednesday night if, on special for emergency, then?
Yeah, we can create a fund emergency.
Okay, just so everybody understands.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Councilor Simon?
Yes.
Councilor Heising?
Yes.
Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Four A's, zero N's, motion carries.
We have nothing under second reading. And under third reading of legislation, we have a resolution 2024-10, which is a resolution adopting the county 911 final plan. Seems like it's been there forever.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
May we move first? Oh, Steve. Motion to place resolution 2024-10 on third reading, moved by Councilor Schneider and seconded by Councilor Heising. Any discussion? Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Councilor Heising?
Yes.
Councilor Simon?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Four A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Okay, next we have resolution 2024-11, which is a resolution authorizing the Wausau Fire Department to enter into a memorandum of understanding for participation in the Fulton County Special Response Team.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion to place resolution 2024-11 on third reading, moved by Council Simon and seconded by Council Heising. Any discussion? Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Four A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Under new business?
I have something.
Okay, I do too. I got a couple.
You go first.
Okay. Under new business, a motion to approve pending approval by the state and the sale of alcohol in downtown on April 26, 2024, at the second annual Walapalooza Concert to be held at the corner of South Fulton Street and Commercial. I went to that last year. It was really good.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion to approve all of that, moved by Council President Stickley and seconded by Council Simon. Any discussion?
Is it, I wondered, is it going to be a contained space?
Yes. Oh, yeah, they have, they have to be.
All right.
Fenced in and I was told.
Licensed.
Check driver's license on entry.
Okay.
By the Wausau PD, I presume. It's part of the sellers.
Yeah.
By the what?
The sellers.
They have certified sellers that will be checking any of these.
Them? Yeah, okay.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Four A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. It's always a good question to reiterate just so that public knows that it will go by the, all of those state mandates. The only other thing, let's see, under pickleball, we had the Rotary Reverse Raffle on Saturday, which was a great event, a beautiful day, and yet we sold, how many tickets were sold? There were a lot.
Three hundred.
Yeah, it was a sellout. And they had a band there and lots of raffles and reverse raffles. But I was approached probably three times on people saying, thank you for the pickleball courts. And these people are wanting to form a committee. I mean, they are really, I told you, they were, they were gonna do this, but they want tournaments. And they said, it's amazing. And they are so grateful to the city and council and everybody else who participated in making sure this happened. Thank you very much. But on that note, the one thing that's been coming across, we're doing so much out at homecoming with the front end, the new equipment backed by the pickleball, is when we did the legislation for the dogs in the park, the one thing is they had to stay on a leash and you have to pick up after them. That is not happening. So we are spending, I would say, half a day of going around and having to pick up everyone's dog waste in that park. And when we wanna have people come in, that is just a no-no. We have the, the little waste containers and bags and all that stuff there for them. There's no excuse. But in the legislation, when that went forward, it stated that if the public was not willing to do that, that we would re, come back. I don't want to take that away. I think it's great that we're giving that park, but I, we can't keep wasting a half a day or more of picking up after people because they just don't want to. Or not have them on leashes because that's just dangerous.
Do we have signs at the various entrances that they have to be on leash or pick up first?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just.
And in the, in the bike trail too, because that's another place we, it's so funny. It's the places where there are their containers is where they're not picking up. So, and you know, I, I don't like to talk about it, but it is something that when we wanna promote and the Rotary has given us this amazing equipment, we gotta keep that clean.
Do we need to have a PR?
It's happening.
Okay.
Yes, it's gonna go up, but I just wanted, once it goes out.
I'd be interested to know what the fines are related to that.
Mm-hmm, they're not, they're not that high. I mean, we have them downtown too, but it's just out there, it's the dog park. And everybody just thinks that that's their, you know, let's walk them to the homecoming so then we don't have to pick them up. It's just, it's not right. And there's so many people who do abide by the laws, but then it's just those few. But we have a lot of waste out there.
There's a lot of people use, I live out there and I see them walking all the time. I think what has to be done is the people that follow the rules have to get on the ones that don't, if we don't wanna lose this.
I'm gonna volunteer Jeremy for an undercover operation at the park.
That's funny.
Have like a ghillie suit, you know?
So they walk the trails with their dogs?
And that, yeah, and they don't pick them up in the trails either. And that's even worse because you're confined to a space that you can't get around. So what, we're very privileged, Wausau, is to have all of these parks.
People know better, though.
They do.
They do. And I, I'm hoping just by saying something that maybe it'll get out, word will get out, that we can, you know, kind of work a little bit more diligent on picking out. Because again, according to the legislation, if we're having to continually do this, we will come back and take it off. Because, and I don't wanna do that.
Are there many people actually caught or not?
No.
No, no.
Okay, I was just gonna say, if you had made the fine hard enough, yeah, made the fine hard, a fine high enough, it might discourage them.
But you could put trail cams out there too.
Yeah.
In your prop areas.
It's, it's, and I know people, oh, but that's all you gotta worry about. It's not that we're worried about it. It's the fact that the amount of money that we put into that park to make it better for the citizens, we all need to step up and just try to keep it cleaner with the dog.
Not to mention the issue is that your dog, your other dogs could catch.
Yes.
From the fecal matter.
That is, that is so true.
And little kids, we put a playground and then, you know, you have little toddlers.
When I went out to check out the new playground after park board meeting, we were dodging all the way around that brand new equipment. And I'm, I'm just like, this is not, you know, what this park was made for. It was, it was always kind of quiet and, you know, it was active and quiet, and now it's becoming active again. I just would really like to see people step up and take care of it, so.
So maybe we'll have to put a fence area for the dog park.
Yeah, you don't wanna do that because then you got dogs in a confined area and we then are responsible if somebody gets.
Then the leashes come off.
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah. It's, it's easy to walk a dog and, and pick up.
Everybody needs bigger signs.
Well, if it doesn't straighten itself up, what maybe could happen is no dogs for like the next four months. And then we'll open it up again, only if people follow the rules. So then the word might get out that, hey, we better start picking up.
And, and that's true, but it, and it would take almost four months to get it, get it out to everybody to understand it. And Sarah, yes, we are gonna be putting it out. Summer's coming. Kids are out walking. There's a lot of different things that we like to put out there, but that's gonna be one of them.
Well, the news media can put it in for us. And the TV.
Wausau has an, an issue with, with Dog Doodoo. That's not a good title.
It's a nice park out there.
It is.
We need to keep it clean for everyone.
You had something else on your new business?
I do. For years, the tornado siren at the golf course has been broken. It is repaired, is up and running. Hopefully we'll never have to utilize it. But I would just like to say on record for myself, I would like to thank every man and woman that had anything to do with repairing it for the citizens of Wausau in case we do have to have it someday.
Especially in the golf course area.
And that's at the golf course. So I would just like to say on the record, myself, thank you for getting it done.
Thank you. All right. Well, with that, do we have any old business? If not, let's pay the bills, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion to approve and pay the bills, as presented, moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council, Council President Stickley. Any discussion? Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stickley?
Yes.
Council Simon?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Four A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Can I have a motion for Jeremy, please?
I'll be there.
I will second.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, moved by Council Simon and seconded by Council Heising. All in favor?
All right.